Good evening. This is a regular scheduled meeting of the Kettering City Council. Today's date is May 9, 2023. We're going to start our meeting tonight with a presentation of the colors by the Kettering Police Department. Next week is Police Memorial Week, and since we will not have session then, we're going to have this honor tonight. So, present colors.
Detail. Order. Right. Face. Forward. March. Left. 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 Right. Left. Left. Wheel right. Move. Detail. Hold. Present. Halt. Post. Colors. Present. Halt. Detail. Order. Halt. Right. Face. Forward. March. Left. 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 Wheel right. Move. Detail. Hold. Present. Halt. Post. Colors. Present. Halt.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Detail. Order. Halt. Right. Face. Forward. March. Left. Left. Left.
Thank you. I would like to call attention to the fact that we will be honoring our fallen officers with a special ceremony this Thursday, I believe it's at 3:00. Okay, right out here on the plaza. Okay, thank you. Bow your heads for an invocation. Dear Lord, we pray for unity. We have come together as a group united in passion and purpose. Help us maintain unity as we discuss certain matters and implement projects. We pray for open hearts and minds that will promote and accept better ideas. We seek your honor in everything we do and say, and we ask for your blessings for our community and for all who need our prayers and assistance. Amen.
Amen.
Okay. Next, I would like to recognize our Miami Valley Communication Council TV operator, Mike Soprone. Mike, thank you for your assistance. He's waving up there. Okay. Mr. Duke has an excused absence this meeting, but we have a special treat for you. He is recovered to the point that he's able to send us a message, so I promised him I would read it for you tonight. Dear residents, I have missed a number of meetings since January, and I think it's important for me to explain why. As you might know, I am in the hospital recovering from HSV1 viral encephalopathy. This virus attacks a person's brain, and in my case, it damaged a part of the left side, causing some memory loss. The inactivity has led me with the inability to use the majority of my muscles, which I am working with rehab to recover from. In January and February, I was in a coma, trying to fight the virus, and fortunately, I won. Since then, I have been in the hospital recovering. I wanted you to know how serious this illness is, and let you know I am really sorry that I have not been able to participate in the activities of our city. Thank you for all the warm wishes, visits, cards, and prayers. Councilman Bruce Duke, District 4. So, all I can say is, this is a man who couldn't talk at all a month ago, and he is able to dictate that to us tonight, so God, we thank you for bringing Bruce back, and I honestly think he will be back. I never thought I'd say those words, but he'll be back. So, thank you for your attention to that. Mrs. Fisher, can I call on you for a motion to approve the minutes?
Yes, ma'am. I have reviewed both the council and workshop minutes for April the 25th, and I do find them in order, and I move for their approval.
Second.
Okay. The motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments? Seeing none, call the roll.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Kleipass?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Duval?
Yes.
Mayor Lehner?
Yes. Okay, we will now have any proclamations or special presentations? We do have a proclamation for Bike Month, and I would like to call on Mrs. Hall, who is on the Bike Committee, to read the proclamation.
Yes. So happy to read this with the representation here from the Bike Committee, such a stellar and well-organized and efficient group, does such a great job. It's a pleasure to serve on the committee. So, we are proclaiming as a city that whereas the bicycle is an economic, healthy, convenient, and environmentally sound form of transportation, and an excellent tool for recreation enjoyment of Kettering scenic beauty, and whereas biking is a lifeline for so many people during their daily lives, whether it's the primary way people commute to essential jobs, the way people relieve stress and decompress after being home for long periods of time, or the way children get much-needed exercise when schools are closed, and whereas creating a bicycling-friendly community has been shown to improve citizens' health and well-being, traffic safety, and wear and tear on roads, and whereas the City of Kettering's commitment to create a bicycle-friendly community is evident in recent award designations, including the city receiving the Bronze Level Bicycle Friendly Award from the League of American Bicyclists, and whereas the city will continue to foster relationships with local organizations, including Bike Miami Valley, Five Rivers Metro Parks, the Dayton Cycle Club, and the League of American Bicyclists, to enhance bike safety within the Kettering community, and whereas with the help of various groups and organizations, public awareness of bicycle safety will continue to grow and will improve the health and safety for everyone on the road, which will allow Kettering community to continue to be a premier destination for cycling. Now therefore, Peggy Lehner, Mayor of City of Kettering, Ohio, on behalf of City Council in this community, does hereby proclaim May 2023 to be Bike Month in the City of Kettering, Ohio, and encourage all citizens to recognize the importance of bicycle safety and to be more aware of cyclists on our streets and roads.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Hall. And I would like to call up Kendall Drager, who's chairperson of the Bike Committee, and Brent Debit, president of Cycle Kettering, who will be accepting the proclamation this evening. Okay.
On behalf of the VPAC and Cycle Kettering, we appreciate the proclamation. Real briefly, some of the VPAC activities this past year, we made a recommendation to approve the safety of Route Number 19 as it crosses Marshall. We shared a booth with Cycle Kettering at five of the city events to help promote both walking and bicycling in the city, and we also initiated a data collection project in order to count bicycles on certain streets throughout the city.
Hi, I'm Brent Debit. I'm the president of Cycle Kettering. It's a new organization here in Kettering to promote and advocate for safe cycling in our city, and so we've been meeting regularly for the last two years. We've jointly sponsored a booth at many Kettering events, and our big project this past year has been to sponsor, in partnership with the Parks Recreation and Cultural Arts Department, a series of five community rides that take Kettering citizens through the community and demonstrate how it's safe and fun to cycle in Kettering. So, we thank you for your support.
Thank you. That's all great work. I've taken my bike out a couple times now in anticipation of a bike ride, and it starts raining every time I do, so. I swear. Public hearings, we have none this evening. This is the point in the agenda that if anyone would like to address any issues, any legislation that is on the agenda for tonight, they may do so at this time. Anyone wishing to speak before council with comments or new information about the legislation on tonight's agenda may do so now. Each speaker is limited to five minutes. Speakers must state their name and address. Comments should be addressed to council. If you have comments that are not about the agenda, about the legislation on tonight's agenda, there will be an opportunity for those to be heard later in the meeting. Is there anyone who wishes to come down and address council? Seeing no one at this time, we will move on to public ordinances and second reading.
Your honor, I have an ordinance to amend the text of various sections of the City of Kettering zoning code. It is requested by the Planning and Development Department, and I move for its approval.
Second.
Okay, let's see. Mr. Greason.
Yes, your honor. You've heard a presentation on this item, and this is just an additional reading. This change in the zoning code corrects and clarifies and omits areas of conflict. It serves to introduce best practices and modernize and expand the flexibility in some of our code. It also modifies the permitted use table by removing certain uses from the business park and business districts which take up significant land while providing minimal employment opportunities. If you have any questions, we'd be glad to answer them.
Does anyone have any questions? Okay, call the roll, please.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Kleipass?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Duval?
Yes.
Mayor Lehner?
Yes. We now have ordinances and second reading, I mean, sorry, resolutions. Authorizing, next one is to go to Tony. Resolutions.
Thank you, your honor. I have a resolution authorizing the city manager to contract with PepsiCo Beverage Sales LLC for the purchase of non-alcoholic Pepsi products for sale at the Phrase Pavilion for the 2023 season. The estimated cost is $60,000. Those funds are available. It's requested by Parks, Recreation, and Culture Arts Department. I move for approval.
Second.
It's been moved to the second. Mr. Greason, do you have any comments?
Yes, your honor. The Phrase season is upon us, and we're so excited. There's a great lineup of concerts, and so this is one of the purchases necessary to make sure that our customers have the opportunity to purchase concessions when they're going to one of their favorite events or concerts. The low bidder in this case for beverages was PepsiCo. Purchases will include a variety of non-alcoholic beverages. They were the low bidder after obtaining quotes. There is an option to renew for two additional years after this year, and the budget amount is approximately $60,000 based on estimated volume of sales for the 2023 Phrase season.
Okay, thank you. Any questions about Pepsi? Okay, call the roll.
Mr. Kleipass?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Duval?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mayor Lehner?
Yes.
Your honor, I have a resolution authorizing the city manager to apply for the Ohio Law Enforcement Bulletproof Vest Program grant through the Ohio Attorney General's Office. This is being requested by the police department. I move for approval.
Second.
Mr. Greason.
Yes, your honor. We are endeavoring to purchase 16 bulletproof vests at about $1,300 a vest, a little over that, and we are always seeking grant opportunities to offset local expenditures, and in this case, we're applying to the Ohio Attorney General's Office. If successful, or when successful, it will, this grant would reimburse 75% of the cost of each vest.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone have any questions? Call the roll.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Duval?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Kleipass?
Yes.
Mayor Lehner?
Yes.
Your honor, I have a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a cost-sharing agreement with the Board of Education of the Kettering City School District for the Safety Section Program for the 2023-2024 school year. This is requested by the Engineering Department. I move for approval.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Greason.
Yes, your honor. The City of Kettering and the Kettering Board of Education, as you know, have for a long time shared the cost of services for the adult crossing guards and perform crossing guard duties at designated intersections and school zones. It's part of our Kettering Safe Route to Schools program. It's an excellent partnership, and this resolution authorizes me to continue that in the upcoming year.
Any questions? Seeing none, call the roll.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Duval?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Kleipass?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Duval?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Kleipass?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Duval?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Kleipass?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Duval?
Yes.
Mayor Lehner?
Yes. We now have ordinances and second reading, I mean, sorry, resolutions. Authorizing, next one is to go to Tony. Resolutions.
Thank you, your honor. I have a resolution authorizing the city manager to contract with PepsiCo Beverage Sales LLC for the purchase of non-alcoholic Pepsi products for sale at the Phrase Pavilion for the 2023 season. The estimated cost is $60,000. Those funds are available. It's requested by Parks, Recreation, and Culture Arts Department. I move for approval.
Second.
It's been moved to the second. Mr. Greason, do you have any comments?
Yes, your honor. The Phrase season is upon us, and we have a great lineup. You may have seen this past week Clint Black announced, as well as the Gin Blossoms. Just a few other highlights, Tesla, August 1st, Happy Together Tour, August 10th, and Dave Koz and Friends, August 12th. Of course, tickets can be purchased to all events at the Phrase at our ticket office, at the Fan Fair Store at Town and Country, online, or by phone. Please enjoy an event or a concert at the Phrase this summer. The Dorothy Lane Road project continues, and it's obviously been challenging both for the county as well as the residents in that area. We're here to announce that East Dorothy Lane will be closed to, through traffic between Far Hills and Schroier beginning May 9th from 9:00 to 4:00. Continued installation of water services onto the new water main that's been installed. They're anticipating, Montgomery County is, that it'll be four to five days, and detour signage will be in place. If we could pull up the detour, this is the temporary vehicle detour that will be posted during that timeframe. As you heard earlier this evening, with your proclamation, it is Bike Month, where we celebrate by riding to work for fitness or fun. Sunday, May 7th is National Ride a Bike Day, and Friday, May 20th is Bike to Work Day. The Cycle Kettering Community Rides that were referenced earlier this evening start on May 21st, and you can register for those, and there's a, we encourage people to check out the bike map on our website as they prepare to hopefully join one of the community rides or participate in one of the activities during Bike Month. Recently, some of you attended an event where you had the opportunity to hear from some of the graduates of our micro enterprise program and how successful it's been. We have two great opportunities for small businesses in Kettering through this program, and I'm going to put Ms. Shrimp on the spot if she would like to say a little bit about the micro enterprise program. We would encourage small businesses to participate.
Okay, well, this is a partnership between the Board of Community Relations, the Community Development Department for the City of Kettering, and the Economic Development Department. There are two components to the program. There are free technical assistance classes. Those are open to anybody. We have one tomorrow. It's going to be on writing a business plan, and there will be a template for a business plan and an instructor from SCORE. And then we have two more coming up subsequent Wednesdays on Marketing Your Business, Wednesday, May 17th, and then Lessons Learned Panel from Veteran Business Owners on May 24th. Those will be held here at the Government Center. Then, on May 25th, we'll open up an application process for a forgivable loan program that you can use for the items that are listed on the flyer. This will be a competitive process, and we will look through the applications and score them, and you must earn a certain score in order to receive the loan. I will point out that you can get extra points by attending this and other sessions so that, you know, the goal is to give the forgivable loan to people who are doing the work and putting in the effort to getting their business started, or, I should say, who are already, have a business here in Kettering. So, if they have any questions, they can contact me or Angela Rockman in our Community Development Office.
Thank you. Are you done?
Not quite. Just want to highlight Memorial Day on Monday, May 29th at Beaver Town Cemetery. And that's a partnership, partnership's a theme, that's a partnership with the American Legion. Also, please join us for our Community Block Party on May 31st from 6:00 to 8:00. And I believe, lastly, we want to highlight the Free Summer Food Program, free lunch to children ages 0 to 18, June 5th through August 7th, and information is available here on your screen. And now I'm finished.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Let's see. We'll now move on to, what do we, first we have other business not on the written agenda. If there is anyone who wish to address council tonight, who has
It's being requested for the Economic Development Department for expenditures related to the recent sale of approximately twenty-eight acres in the Miami Valley Research Park, located at the northwest corner of County Line Road, Shakertown, and Research Boulevard intersection. The other is in relation to a previous resolution on tonight's agenda of two thousand three hundred and nineteen dollars to accept the global fire prevention grant for the smoke detectors that were previously mentioned. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? See none? Call the roll.
Mrs. Hall.
Yes.
Mr. Scott.
Yes.
Ms. DuVall.
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher.
Yes.
Mr. Klepass.
Yes.
Mayor Lainer.
Yes.
Okay. We have one ordinance tonight, first reading, I believe, uh, with you?
No, we don't.
Okay. All right. We will now move to certifications and petitions. You call on Sean Kozinski.
Your Honor, we did not have any certifications or petitions this evening.
Okay, thank you. And we will now move on to the manager's report and the community update. Mr. Grayson.
Yes, Your Honor. Pleased to give another community update. Coming to the FRAZE, as I talked about earlier, FRAZE season is upon us, and we have a great lineup. You may have seen this past week Clint Black announced, as well as the Gin Blossoms. Just a few other highlights, Tesla, August first, Happy Together Tour, August tenth, and Dave Koz and Friends, August twelfth. Of course, tickets can be purchased to all events at the FRAZE at our ticket office, at the Fanfare Store at Town and Country, online, or by phone. Please enjoy an event or a concert at the FRAZE this summer. The Dorothy Lane Road project continues, and it's obviously been challenging both for the county as well as the residents in that area. We're here to announce that East Dorothy Lane will be closed to, through traffic between Far Hills and Schroyer, beginning May ninth, from nine to four. Continued installation of water services onto the new water main that's been installed. They're anticipating, Montgomery County is, that it'll be four to five days, and detour signage will be in place. If we could pull up the detour, this is the temporary vehicle detour that will be posted during that timeframe. As you heard earlier this evening, with your proclamation, it is Bike Month, where we celebrate by riding to work for fitness or fun. Sunday, May seventh is National Ride a Bike Day, and Friday, May twentieth, is Bike to Work Day. The cycle Kettering Community Rides that were referenced earlier this evening start on May twenty-first, and you can register for those, and there's a, we encourage people to check out the bike map on our website as they prepare to hopefully join one of the community rides or participate in one of the activities during Bike Month. Recently, some of you attended an event where you had the opportunity to hear from some of the graduates of our micro enterprise program and how successful it's been. We have two great opportunities for small businesses in Kettering through this program, and I'm going to put Ms. Shrimp on the spot if she would like to say a little bit about the micro enterprise program. We would encourage small businesses to participate.
Okay, well, this is a partnership between the Board of Community Relations, the Community Development Department for the City of Kettering, and the Economic Development Department. There are two components to the program. There are free technical assistance classes. Those are open to anybody. We have one tomorrow. It's going to be on writing a business plan, and there will be a template for a business plan and an instructor from SCORE. And then we have two more coming up, subsequent Wednesdays, on Marketing Your Business, Wednesday, May seventeenth, and then Lessons Learned Panel from Veteran Business Owners on May twenty-fourth. Those will be held here at the Government Center. Then, on May twenty-fifth, we'll open up an application process for a forgivable loan program that you can use for the items that are listed on the flyer. This will be a competitive process, and we will look through the applications and score them, and you must earn a certain score in order to receive the loan. I will point out that you can get extra points by attending this and other sessions, so that, you know, the goal is to give the forgivable loan to people who are doing the work and putting in the effort to getting their business started, or, I should say, who are already have a business here in Kettering. So if they have any questions, they can contact me or Angela Rockman in our Community Development Office.
Thank you. Are you done?
Not quite. Just want to highlight Memorial Day on Monday, May twenty-ninth, at Beaver Town Cemetery. And that's a partnership. Partnership's a theme. That's a partnership with the American Legion. Also, please join us for our Community Block Party on May thirty-first, from six to eight. And I believe, lastly, we want to highlight the Free Summer Food Program, free lunch to children ages zero to eighteen, June fifth through August seventh. And information is available here on your screen. And now I'm finished.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Let's see. We'll now move on to, what do we, first we have other business not on the written agenda. If there is anyone who wish to address council tonight, who has not had an opportunity earlier to do it, I would invite them down at this point. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address council? Okay, see none? We'll move on to council reports. Mrs. Fisher.
Well, Your Honor, I'll apologize a little bit, but there were several events that I attended just by myself, and so I want to uplift all of those. The first one being that our awesome employee council here within the city had a Walk for Wellness, and it was a fantastic event where we did a two-mile loop, and I met a lot of awesome employees that were out there getting their exercise at lunchtime. That was on the twenty-sixth. Twenty-seventh, Miami Valley Regional Planning Commission had a spring dinner with awards. It was really cool. The winner, one of the winners was Rebecca Benet. And as they were telling her story, she started her career here in Kettering, Ohio. And so I was like, wow, that was very cool, you know, but then she got all grown up and had a great career and was awarded a fantastic award that evening. Moving on to the fourth, I was able to go to the Alderkey Club and give the award to Annabelle Hacker, who was our mayor's awardee, who was unable to be at our council meeting. And so that was really neat because we were able to recognize her in front of all her peers, and that was just a fantastic time, early in the morning, I must say, but it was a good time. On the fifth, attaboy to our honor guard, as I attended the Montgomery County Law Enforcement Memorial Ceremony. Every year, that one just, I'll say, tears me up, as we recognize all of those fallen officers, specifically our Kettering Officer, Paul Metzger, and a very good dear friend of mine, Mary Bell. So that's always a very emotional one for me. Last but not least, Art on the Playground. What a fantastic Parks and Rec event. This year, it wasn't freezing cold, it wasn't sleeting, it was sunny, and it was packed. There were tons of kids, tons of parents, putting together their crafts. To no surprise to the mayor, I had one great grandson that was good and going from station to station, and the other one took off into the woods. And so I thought I lost him at some point, but our habitat area is just fantastic and great kid-friendly, and that event was very well-attended, and it was fantastic.
Is the one who was very good and stayed put, the one that's two weeks old?
No, actually, it was the nine-year-old. And that crazy four-year-old loves the woods. But the honeysuckles down, thanks to our service, cities of service, but a good time. That's all I have, Your Honor.
Thank you. Mr. Klepass.
Thank you. I want to add a few comments about Becky Benet. The city manager and I both attended her retirement celebration on the twenty-eighth. And what was very interesting about Becky is that she was recruited and, well, she applied for and became the Executive Director of Five Rivers Metro Parks back in two thousand eleven, and she came here from Arizona. But she got to Arizona, as you mentioned, after being mentored originally in the Parks and Recreation world by a legend of Kettering Parks and Recreation, and that was Joe Homewood. And she mentioned that, obviously, at the celebration. So she really got her start here, made all that move across country at one time, and then she came back here and did just a great job, and the things that they said about her and the work she did to keep Five Rivers Metro Parks kind of the envy of the country, basically, and what we're doing with our parks there. On the twenty-ninth, quite a few of us went over to Christ Church, and Lisa DuVall helped organize the Kettering Centerville Pancake Breakfast and raised a lot of, a lot of good funds, I understand, and we enjoyed that. On May, the fifth, I went to the ice show over at our ice arena, and I had never been to that before. I think most of MVCC, including Mike, who was in the Crowsnest there, he's up at our Crowsnest, they had all kind of broadcasting of that event. And I never thought too much about it in the past, and when I got there, I was shocked. The parking lot was packed, the ice arena was packed with folks, and it was a great program called Circus, the Greatest Show on Ice. And of course, the performers were all from either events that they participated in, like ice hockey, maybe, there was ice hockey kits, there was folks that are in ice class, ice skating classes, and it was, it was a great, great show. And thank goodness, my wife reminded me, you ought to take a jacket with you. It's going, it was cold in there. And one of the highlights is watching the guy drive that Zamboni during halftime, skid around that place. And I also want to mention, as part of National Police Week, and you said something about Mary Bell, I went to last Saturday, a luncheon at the Presidential, put on by the Daughters of the American Revolution, and they honored six retired or former Dayton police officers, all females. And it was quite a nice event, and Mary Bell was given, her family was given, given one of those awards. So that was a very nice, another nice event in Kettering, and brought a lot of people into town. In our words of wisdom for tonight concerning shopping in Kettering is you can't buy happiness, but you can buy a local, and that's kind of the same thing. That's all I have.
Thank you, Tony. Jill?
There was good news and some bad news for Kettering, as I see it this week. The bad news was, once again, we're dealing with school shooting stuff and two threats in one week, keeping parents in terror all the time. And got an email the night of the great success of STEAM Night from the Kettering City Schools, late at night, that Fairmont was closing school the next day, and, you know, many parents like myself considered keeping their kids home entirely from any other school in Kettering. Firearms, number-one cause of death for children in America, and it's just, boggles the mind that we're the only country in the world, in the history of the world, who's had that problem. And it's just, it's a bipartisan desire to have more safety checks and background checks on guns, and it's just, I can't figure out why that hasn't happened. I do want to give kudos, though, to the Kettering Police Department. Fourteen hours after a threat was made by the fourteen-year-old a couple days ago, you guys found out who it was, and it was from an anonymous post on Instagram, as I understand. So that's pretty impressive, and you kept a lot of kids safe by doing that. The good news was the STEAM Night was really amazing and such a positive step for the Kettering schools. When the U.S. is really declining in science and math, they're making positive steps. My eight-year-old was talking about it for weeks, couldn't wait to go, had an amazing time, and they got twice as many families there as they expected, and it was just a great night. And also regarding Kettering, Fairmont, they are baseball conference champs, so hats off to them for that. And just wanted to also mention, there's still lots of spots with our Parks and Rec Summer Childcare Program, really great summer option. And however, there is still a big need for childcare in Kettering, and look forward to hearing good news on that front in coming weeks. That's it.
Okay, thank you.
Nothing for me to add this session.
Okay.
I would like to start off by thanking everyone here who is able to attend the Pancake Breakfast for Kiwanis. As Tony mentioned, it was a great event, and we did raise a good amount of money, so thank you. It was wonderful. Looking forward to this Thursday. It is our last Leadership Academy class of the year, and the graduation will be Thursday evening at NCR Country Club, and I hope to see all of you there. For those who can't attend, our friends at MVCC will be there, live streaming it, mostly for the benefit of Bruce Duke. I want to say that it was an incredibly difficult day for parents in Kettering, and probably not just for the parents, for the staff, for everyone who works with the schools. Everyone up here is a parent, and I think we all know that fear, that anxiety. But I want to thank the schools for their communication to the parents. It was great, and I want to thank the Police Department. You guys did a great job, and I'm glad our kids are safe another day, and that's all I have.
Thank you, all of you, for attending so many events that make Kettering special. It would be nice if all seven of us could show up to every one of those, but I don't think that's going to happen. I was able to attend the opening groundbreaking ceremony for Children's Medical Center New Mental Health Facility. As Jill mentioned, guns are the number-one cause of death in our children, but one of the side effects of guns, I think, in all of the violence and COVID, has been the tremendous amount of mental illness that our kids are struggling through. This facility at Children's is going to provide us absolutely world-class mental health care for the kids in our area. Unfortunately, as large as this one-hundred-and-ten-million-dollar building is, and the number of beds that it will be offering to kids, it is still not going to meet the need that we have in our community. So we have to look for other ways to keep our children safe, not just from gunfire, but from the fear of where they're going, what, no one knows. No one knows what's causing all this. But particularly special about this ribbon-cutting yesterday was the governor was there, nice, but the Hope Squad from Kettering High School was there, and a young lady from the Hope Squad actually gave the keynote address, talking about her own mental health struggles and how the Hope Squad at the school has really helped her, pulled her through, and she was now up there speaking to three hundred community leaders, and very poised young lady. On a lighter side, Saturday night, Mayor's Party with a Purpose, formerly known as the Mayor's Ball. We're not having dancing this year because we're having the dueling pianos, which are really super fun, engaging duo of piano players who will keep us on our feet, but it's just, should be a really great time. Fabulous auction items, both silent and live auction. One of our council members, who will go unmentioned, has been out visiting every bar in the city and getting free rounds of drinks, and then she's got a party bus lined up to take everyone around, and then Chief Protsman is going to make sure that they all get home. So tickets are still available, because it's not a sit-down dinner this time. We're able to take reservations almost up until the final minute. So if you've given any thought and set that invitation aside and didn't do anything about it, probably need to get it in the mail tomorrow, or maybe call the number on the invitation. Go to the Kettering Rotary website, who are the prime sponsors of this event, and they have information on how you can order tickets at this last minute. So the beneficiary of the contributions this year is Bridget's Path. Once again, dealing with one of those serious issues, babies born with addiction. So, but we're going to have a great time raising money for those kids. So, and I want to final, a shout-out to Missy Mae Walters and Brenda Stanfield, who have done a fabulous job organizing this event, so, thank you. With no further business, come before council, our next council meeting will be on May twenty-third. Thank you. A meeting is adjourned, two weeks from now.